Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Perth East Council this 21st day of March. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everyone could be further ahead for a moment of reflection. Thank you. I need a motion to confirm the agenda as circulated unless someone has anything to add. Amanda? Please do accept this circulated, seconded by Jeremy, all in favor. Okay. Okay, if you have preliminary interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have 14 items on our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to pull, or they have questions on? Seeing nothing, we do have a motion that item 5.1, point one to 5.1, point 14 is set out on the consent agenda for March 21, 2023, regular meeting of council be received for information. And the minutes of the Budget Advisory Committee meeting, February 28, 2023, and the Perth East Public Library Board, March 14, 2023, be received for information. And further, that the minutes of March 7, 2023, regular council meeting be adopted. Please by Gary, seconded by Amanda, all in favor. Okay. Okay. We do have two delegations tonight, and our first delegation is Kristen Crane from Social Research and Planning, United Way. Um, can you hear? Oh, I'm sorry. She's coming in, uh, circle, just to be on our screen. No? Okay, well, we will move on then to our second delegation, and we'll go back to Kristen when she joins us. So we have... Oh, sorry, okay. Okay, there we go. Welcome to Perth East Council, Kristen, and the floor is yours. And Candice. Okay, can you hear it? That would be great if it worked. Good evening, ladies, can you hear it? I'm thinking, no. Can you hear us, ladies? Good evening, ladies, can you hear? Okay, so we will move on to our second delegation, and we have Deborah Swan, Executive Director of the Local Community Food Center. So Deborah, are you in the audience? You are? You're doing live, that's great. So if you want to come up to the desk.
Is that it? Perfect, thank you. So, um, I'm here to talk to you about food security as a follow-up to the presentation you'll hear after me. But what I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about the local so that you can understand that what we can bring to your community. Um, we have a lot of experience in and a really good reputation with. And then I want to talk to you about a project that we are bringing into Milverton and ask for your help in doing that. So the local, um, Community Food Center has been around for 12 years. We're in Stratford, where a place where people can come together through the power of food. Um, where everyone is welcome, no matter what their circumstance. So we do not do any means testing. You don't have to prove you have a need or don't have a need to come in and use our services or take part in our activities. And the reason we do that is because we feel dignity is really important for people. And when people are struggling, the last thing that they should be expected to do is to tell their story, unless they want to share it. Um, and need to qualify, um, for any type of service that they could benefit from. So our mission statement, um, is that we build health, belonging, and social justice in our communities through the power of food. If you can think of any time in your life where you've become, where you've had really great conversations or feel very bonded to people, it's usually over food, over a pot of tea, over a Christmas dinner. Uh, but all of our memories from childhood on, um, many of them include, um, meals we have with people we care about. So some of the things that we do, um, we do, uh, community meals. We have three community meals a week. One is a supper time meal, um, and, um, one is, uh, Seniors Wednesdays is what we call it, which is a lunchtime meal. And then we have a Friday cafe. And the Monday night meal and the Friday cafe, um, operate alongside our market, which I will tell you a little bit about in a minute. We also provide lots of different programmings around cooking and gardening. We have, um, we have, uh, uh, programs for youth. We have programs for young families with children. We have programs for seniors and, um, programs for people who just want to learn, um, a little bit about gardening or share their knowledge about cooking. Uh, we have an off-site garden, which is five acres. It's, um, city land that has been leased to us, uh, for a dollar a year, um, for us to, uh, run a community garden. Um, it includes, uh, 51 allotment plots for individuals. It includes a no-till garden. It includes a community garden. It includes an edible forest and also a medicine meal. And we're just starting this year to do a pollinator garden as well. That will be part of the Master Gardeners of Stratford Pollinator Path through the city. So, um, there's a lot of things that we offer people around foods, food security. One of the most important things we do... Just learned how to do a PowerPoint, I guess. There we go. Um, we don't only take care of people's immediate need around food. And, and it's important for you to know that we only offer fresh food. There's nothing in a can. Any of our meals, it's all started from scratch. We don't take anything out of a can or out of a box. Um, and we know that poverty is the main, the main contributor to food insecurity. And so we look for ways to address those issues for folks. So we do a lot of things around advocacy and, um, social justice. We've done a lot of work lately around Bill C-22, which is the federal bill that will see people with disabilities, um, receive higher benefits, and that will take them out of poverty. Um, and, uh, we actually were invited and presented to the House of Commons on that issue, um, just, uh, before Christmas. I'm really sorry. Your technology has misfired as well. Are you able to? Oh, there we go, okay. So the storehouse is a big part of what we do. We bring in over $180,000 worth of food through our storehouse. That provides for our markets, our meals, and our programs, and also other nonprofits in the, uh, community, other food banks in the community, and, uh, some of the schools for the nutrition programs. It's important for you to know that the $180,000 worth of food, 85% of that is locally sourced. And the 15% that we can't source locally, like our citrus and our bananas, we use a local distributor. So any dollars that people donate or invest in the local is going back into our local economy uh, through the purchase of locally sourced food. A lot of our food comes from the Amira Farmers Auction, um, every week, and other local producers that we have relationships with. So I want to talk to you a little bit more about the community access market because this is the project we want to take to, uh, bring to Milverton. We have a community access market on Mondays and Fridays at the local, and then we run a mobile market in St. Mary's twice a month. The reason we started doing our access market is because when we were doing our programs, people were saying to us, "It's great for us to learn how to cook all of this food, but we can't afford to buy it." And so, you know, it's, "We get to eat it when we're here, but we don't get to eat it when we go home." And so we thought, "Well, we're bringing in all this food at a really good co- uh, low cost, so why don't we just offer it out at that cost?" So this is a net zero market. We make no profit on the food. What we buy it for is what we sell it for. And any of the costs incurred, we absorb into our budget, uh, through grants and, and different, uh, ways of getting funding. So people can actually afford to purchase healthy, fresh, nutritious, locally sourced food. I don't know if I'm moving it or you're moving it. I'm moving it? I'm not doing a very good job at it. All right, so next slide, thank you. So some of the advantages of the market are, it, not only does it bring people together, but it increases the accessibility to food. So if you go to a grocery store, you often have to buy a bag of potatoes or a bag of carrots. At our market, you can buy one thing, um, at a very low cost. So you have more, more choices in how you spend your food dollars. Um, it also provides the dignity of not having, again, to prove that you have a need. So everybody is welcome to shop at our market. Um, and we have a real cross-sector of folks, but we've, through our research, we've been able to verify that 75% of the people who, who come through our market are actually very food insecure. They're working poor, uh, people, you know, who are working full-time but still have to, um, find ways to put food on the table and pay the rent at the same time. It also leads to, um, long-term financial benefits through, uh, less cost for the health system and all of those sorts of things, and reduces the effects of poverty. So just to show you, uh, the next slide, please, thank you. So we did a comparison of cost, and the yellow is what, um, would, the cost would be at our market, so $20.55. And when we compared to, uh, the six other grocery stores in our community, the next lowest was $26 for the same product, uh, and that was Walmart, where the produce isn't, uh, as fresh or locally sourced or any of those things. The grocery store that shows $44.90 for the exact same things that were in our basket at $20.55 at our market is actually a grocery store that is in the center of one of the lowest-income areas in our community and is a chain that you would expect to have one of the lower costs. So it really goes to show how the targeting sometimes happens in, in some of the larger chains. But for $20.55, you can get a big basket of produce, um, that will last you, uh, a week. So this is the stats we have from the markets we're running currently. Um, for the ones at, uh, our, our location in Stratford, we run twice a week. We have, we average 95 shoppers that buy approximately 900 pounds of food, $1,800, and on average, they spend, uh, just under $20. Next slide, please. And in St. Mary's, where we operate twice a month, we have approximately 160 shoppers, 1,900 pounds of food, $3,000, um, cost, and, um, they spend around the same amount. So, uh, just to show you some feedback, I don't know if you can read that, and I'm not going to read the whole slide, but you can see that the feedback is very positive. People really appreciate, appreciate having the market there. They wish we could be there more often, in fact. And, um, they like the variety and the freshness of the food and the fact that they can get out into their community and meet other people. So, next slide, please, thank you. So, so why are we here today? Well, we have an opportunity to bring an access market to Milverton. We've received a grant of $25,000 that will fund us for approximately one year. Um, and we will model it after the other markets that we have so much experience in providing. Um, this funder, if we could show some outcomes, will be amicable to funding for a second year, um, while we find ways to sustain the market. Now this, again, this money is paying for salaries, our truck expense, our, um, all of those materials, uh, displays, those sorts of things. The food itself is a washout. What we pay is what we sell it for, so there's absolutely no profit made on the food. In fact, some of it, um, we, we sell for less, and if we get food for free through a donation, um, it goes out for free. We don't charge for it. So whatever we pay is what we charge. Uh, next slide? So we're here because we've been here before. We had a small grant about four years ago that, uh, we could test the market here for, and we were, um, at Knoll Crest was where we were located. We ran it for about three months, um, and there was some really good interest, except we didn't have the dollars to sustain it at that time, and then COVID hit. And so there wasn't, um, uh, we were spinning our wheels trying to keep up with ourselves during COVID, and there wasn't the opportunity to come back to Milverton and, 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 and get some, get our feet under us. So now with this grant and with this timeframe we have, we are confident that, um, we can, we can bring the market here, and it will benefit the community of Milverton. Uh, next slide, please. So this is our timeline. So we've connected with, um, there's probably been 14 individuals who came to our first meeting, which was held in February. Becky was there. Um, and, uh, from businesses, from service clubs, and individuals who were interested in the project. Um, so we've got a nice network of folks who are going to help us get it off the ground. We have, um, searched out space when the best space we, we found has been the perk to run the market out of. Um, and we're on target to run our first monthly market on April 27th, which will be the first market. We will start out, um, at one a month, hopefully increasing to two a month come September. That's the plan. And through all of that, we will be doing some evaluation, um, and some, and compiling some data and, um, tweaking if we need to. But our hope is, we're actually ahead of our timeline, um, that we should, we should be able to be twice a month come September. So my ask today is for council to waive the fee of rental for the perk. Um, when we figured it out, it was, we came once, if we were to come once a month, it's, um, just about $100. If we come twice a month, it's going to be more than that. Um, our budget is tight at $25,000. Like I say, that only covers salaries and our truck expenses, um, in procuring the food and getting it here. Um, it's totally run by volunteers that, um, we, we secured through some help in the community. Um, and we don't have a lot of money for rent. And, uh, we would really appreciate if you could at least lower the cost or waive the fee, uh, for us to come, uh, initially once a month and then twice a month in September. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Amanda?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, but, uh, just a comment. I have gone to the local Food Community Center and volunteered there a number of years ago with my Junior Farmer Club. We actually, um, made a meal, and it was really well-received, and we're able to bring some high-quality protein, um, that not a lot of people are often able to afford. So really appreciate the work that you're trying to do. Um, just wondered if there was thought, um, we do have a local food bank here, uh, in town, um, and, uh, they aren't able to offer fresh produce, so it is, um, uh, just like canned goods, that type of thing. Um, I know that as of a year ago, there was approximately, uh, a dozen families that go there on a consistent basis. So just wanted to flag that there might be an opportunity to work together. I know it's a little bit different than your mandate, um, but just wanted to flag that. And then also, not sure, um, it's not covered in this presentation, but just given where we are, um, here in Perth County, I don't know if there's been any advertising done on, um, the Community Food Program Donation Tax Credit for farmers. Um, so there, uh, in Ontario, there is, um, farmers are eligible for 25% for fair market value for agriculture products that they donate. I know we have some really generous organizations, um, in Perth County, and I know the Perth County beef producers, um, donated a lot of, um, meat, uh, in, to various food banks that were able to welcome it, um, across the county. So just wanted to know if there, anyways, wanted to flag that opportunity of that, um, to promote that with your organization, and just also wanted to flag if, so this is just for produce, it's not protein, like meat product or anything? Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. So through the mayor, we, um, you mentioned about the perk. Was that your only, um, spot that you've looked at, Deborah? Like, did you look back at Knoll Crest? Did you, I think we had something in the library, we checked at the library. Um, did you ask anywhere else?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, no, I was just wondering about the egg society building. Uh, to me, that would seem to be, uh, a far better place, like to get in and make it. Like, I don't think you have to.
Okay, Andrew?
Thanks for, uh, thanks for coming and speaking with us, uh, Deborah. So, um, PC Connect, are you aware of the county bus system? I believe it goes from Milverton to Stratford. Do you know if any of your patrons, any of the patrons, um, use that to get to you from outlying areas, whether Milverton or other areas, or?
No, that is where we go. In St. Mary's, so that people who live in St. Mary's have better access. So that's one of the things we're pursuing in that community. But no, we don't see that happening in Strat.
It seems like you're well set up in your current location, you know, and the remote trucks are great. You know, it's if everybody came to you and you could...
Yeah, uh, you know, with, uh, the smaller communities in Perth, it's, you know, it's difficult for people to, uh, have to always go to Stratford for services. We, we feel it's better to bring the service to the community. They don't have dollars for food, they're not going to have dollars for transportation.
That's true, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Nope, any more questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, council will discuss this under new business when you get there. Um, if there's any comments, I guess, or questions you want to make after the energy ladies present, I guess you can come back to seeing that you want to be after them. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, now we're going to go back to Kristen, and can you hear us, ladies?
Yes, we have audio.
Thank you for joining us in person.
Thank you for having us this evening, and I believe, um, Candice will be sharing the screen with our presentation. Uh, I am Kristen Crane. I am the Director of Social Research and Planning with United Way Perth Huron. And I'm joined by Candice Cunningham, who is a Registered Dietitian with Huron Perth Public Health. So today we have two reports, uh, that we're going to share with you, uh, the data that talks about, uh, food insecurity in our region. So in November 2022, the Social Research and Planning Council team created and implemented a survey to capture the characteristics of food insecurity in Huron and Perth Counties. And due to extensive promotion by community partners, we had 740 surveys that were able to analyze, and the key findings will be presented to you today. Food insecurity is defined as inadequate or insecure access to food due to financial constraints. In the survey, 33% of participants are facing moderate or severe food insecurity. And only 3% of respondents felt that their income met their everyday needs. So unfortunately, when a household is experiencing food insecurity, they're already likely struggling financially to cover other basic living expenses. Within the survey of household income sources, the majority, so 62% of respondents, were full-time employed. Provincial, that statistic is 48%. So we do know that for our survey participants, that their incomes do not meet their basic needs. So we know that, uh, from 2020 data, that 81% of the most common jobs in Huron and Perth are below $25 an hour. So this is showing that the wages in our region are not sufficient to meet basic needs. Food insecurity is solved by increasing incomes to a livable wage and providing guaranteed basic income to meet all the needs of individuals. Next. So our survey found that 88% of people have sacrificed the household food budget to pay for other living expenses. And the most common expense that has forced households to reduce their food budget is rental mortgages for 67% of respondents, and that's followed by transportation and utilities. So this is speaking to what Deborah had mentioned about, um, how these other basic expenses are impacting their food budget. So we know that households that live on low income struggle to pay rent and bills and food. Food budgets are sacrificed because they're flexible, and they can be sacrificed to pay other fixed bills or expenses. 38% of respondents said that it was often the case, and 44% said it was sometimes the case that they could not afford balanced meals. And again, this, at the bottom, it shows what are the most common items that people are having difficulty affording. And this is addressed by the food access market that the local is proposing. Next. 9% of our participants said that they had to cut the size of their children's meals or their children had to skip a meal almost every month because there was not enough money to buy food. We also asked if people ever had to go an entire day without eating because there was not enough money. 19% said it happened almost every month. And I really want to draw your attention to this. 3% of our respondents said their children had to go a whole day without food almost every month, and 7% said this happened some months. So we know that in Perth County, in Huron County, there are many, many households in our region with children who are going an entire day without eating. When we look at national and provincial data, we know that in 2021, 16% of households were living with food insecurity and 14.6% of Huron and Perth residences. So I do want to note that the stat that we have pre-pandemic showed that in 2017, 11% of Huron and Perth residents were food insecure. So there is quite a large jump from 2017 to current. Despite significant evidence that food insecurity is an income problem, responses in Canada continue to focus on food provision with the most emphasis on food charity. There is a huge difference in the number of households experiencing food insecurity and the number of households who rely on food banks for food. In 2012, there were five times more people living in food insecure households than those assessing food banks. More recent data from 2015... More recent data from 2015, 2016 suggests that it's actually much higher than that, up to seven times. Food banks are often the last resort for people to obtain food. Most ask for financial assistance from family or friends or will miss a payment before using a food bank. While food banks do provide temporary relief for those who access, there is unfortunately no evidence that they are solution to food insecurity. So in our local survey, almost 50% of participants said they had never used any food community programs, such as food boxes, community meals, food banks, or food pantry. And this is consistent with other national studies. 48% of respondents had often been in situations where they had run short of money and had to sacrifice the food budget. So we also looked at what the mental health implications are of an inadequate food supply. So there are many health implications when someone lives in a food insecure household that do go far beyond just nutrition. So one to note is mental health. The risk of experiencing depression, anxiety disorders, mood disorders, or suicidal thoughts increases with the severity of food insecurity for both adults and youth. During childhood, it can lead to problems such as hyperactivity and inattention. Mortality, this is of course the most serious health consequence. Severely food insecure adults die an average of nine years earlier than adults who are food secure. Nearly 50% of adults who live in severely food insecure households report delaying, reducing, or skipping prescription medication to manage their health conditions because they cannot afford them. Food insecure individuals are more likely to get admitted into acute care and have longer hospital stays compared to those who are food secure. Living with severe food insecurity costs our healthcare system over $2,000 per person per year more compared to those who are food secure. So our local data shows that 38% of participants reported facing physical and mental challenges or relationship issues at home, 31%, barriers to moving forward with their lives, and low productivity at work or school. So now we're going to switch gears a little bit and talk about the Monitoring Food Affordability Report Huron Perth released last year. So to monitor food affordability, Huron Perth Public Health surveys the price of a variety of food from grocery stores across Huron and Perth Counties. Using a survey tool called Monitoring Food Affordability, which was formerly known as the Nutritious Food Basket, we are able to calculate the cost of one week's worth of groceries. In 2022, this tool was updated to reflect the new Kansas Food Guide recommendations. Unfortunately, due to this, the results cannot be compared to previous years. This survey is conducted by pricing 61 food items using the lowest available cost in six area grocery stores and calculating the average retail price. A few limitations I do want you to keep in mind about this tool is that it does assume that people have the time, skill, and equipment needed to cook these food items. And it does not include prepared convenience foods or household non-food items such as toiletries. Additionally, the results in the tool are not to be used as a budgeting tool. So now into the results. So when we read down the left-hand side of the table, you'll note four different income scenarios. All of these scenarios include a household with children from different income sources. The family of four here consists of two adults and two children. Across the top of the table, you will see the monthly income, the monthly cost of rent, and the monthly cost of food, as well as the funds remaining after paying for rent and food. From this chart, you can see that a household with children receiving Ontario Works has much less money remaining at the end of the month, which would have to be put towards heat or hydro if that's not included in their rents, as well as childcare, clothing, transportation, school supplies, and anything else one might need to purchase throughout the months. Again, I do want to reiterate that the cost of food doesn't include non-food items. So that would be laundry detergent, soap, portable paper. So those would all also have to be covered in the funds remaining. On this slide, there are four more scenarios. The table is set up in the same way, just that the scenarios now show households without children from different income sources. And so from this chart, additionally, you can note that individual receiving social assistance is in debt after just paying for rent and food. So this is leaving absolutely no money left for all other expenses. And you can also see that the other two scenarios listed here aren't that much better. I do want to draw your attention to the bachelor apartment, which is noted as a single person receiving Ontario Works. A bachelor apartment is nearly impossible to find in Huron and Perth Counties to rent. Therefore, they would either need to rent a one-bedroom apartment, which is additional cost, putting them further into debt, or they would be forced to rent a two-bedroom apartment or larger and share living expenses with a roommate. So some results of the income analysis using the scenarios you've just seen are communicated in various ways for the purposes of both education and advocacy. Public health dieticians can engage in any of these activities listed. And the image on this slide is just an example of the media communication Huron Perth Public Health did to share the results of the 2022 Monitoring Food Affordability Report. To further advance the work, public health dieticians due with food insecurity, O D P H, which is Ontario Dieticians and Public Health, released a position statement on ways that various organizations can respond to food security. It has been endorsed by a variety of organizations and individuals since then, which includes the Huron Perth Board of Health. Now we're going to talk about a living wage, which is one of the solutions that we have for food insecurity. So living wage is calculated on an annual basis by the Social Research and Planning Council for our region and is based upon research of actual local costs, such as Candice has shared earlier. In 2022, the living wage was assessed at $20.70 per person here on. So this is the hourly wage a worker needs to earn to cover their families' basic everyday expenses, such as food, housing, utilities, childcare, and transportation. People who are paid adequately have improved nutrition and better health. And we invite you to become a living wage employer and to promote it to local businesses. So some other recommendations that you can do as a council to reduce food insecurity in our region is that this group can advocate for other federal and provincial government policies and programs to ensure an adequate income for Canadians. So that would be a basic income guaranteed, social assistance rates indexed to inflation, or of course, supporting a living wage. You could also organize or volunteer at a local free income tax filing clinic where you can offer additional free sports and recreation activities to families in your area. The latter two here will simply just provide our families to keep more money in their pockets that they can spend on nutritious food. So to help you get started with this work, we did write a letter to the Governor of Canada on your behalf, which you can find in the Cost of Eating here on Perth Report, the last two pages. So you're welcome to sign and send that to advocate for basic income. So what basic income is, is that it's an unconditional cash transfer from the government that enables everyone to meet their basic needs, allows them to participate in society, and to live a life with dignity regardless of work status. A guaranteed basic income takes into account all other incomes one is guaranteed to receive and supplements them with the remaining. Therefore, if you have significant income from other sources, you do not receive a payment. At times, we can all be faced with financial risks. So this will allow all of us to meet our basic needs, participate in society, and live with dignity at any point in our lives. There has been multiple pilots across Canada which show how successful a basic income is. One closest to us was implemented in Hamilton, Brantford, and Brant County. And despite it only being implemented for a year, we've seen that participants experienced a decrease in food insecurity, improvements in mental and physical health, and even a decrease in smoking and alcohol use. In this pilot, majority of participants continued to work. Only a small number quit their jobs. And those that did so did so that they could pursue further education or could find a better-paying job. Thanks for the opportunity, and we're happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you, ladies. Questions from members of council? Nope, I don't see any questions. But thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate you coming tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on in our agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll tell you, we'll address this on, we'll address this in under new business. Okay, thank you. So now we're moving on in our agenda. We have no public meetings. We do have a public hearing. Council will now temporarily adjourn to sit as Committee of Adjustment pursuant to Section 45 of the Planning Act. I now declare this public hearing open. This public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by Auto Farms Limited and described as Confession 5 North Art, Lot 5, Part Lot 4, 4485 Road 122. The purpose of this hearing is to give the committee and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the proposed application and receive their input and for the committee to make a decision on the application. All persons attending this hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Committee members may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application but are asked to withhold comment on this application until all persons have been given an opportunity to be heard. Any person present who wishes to receive written notice of the decision made by the Committee of Adjustment is asked to give their name and mail-in address to the Secretary of Treasure at this time. You need to do that by signing in tonight. An appeal to the Ontario Land Tribe, you know, objection to the decision made at this hearing may be filed with the Secretary of Treasure no later than April 10, 2023. No written notice, except as previously noted, will be given unless requested at this time. I will now call on our planner, Pooni, to present the planning report and recommendations. Hi, Pooni, how are you tonight?
Thank you, Mary Egits. I'm very well. Hope you're all well. And good evening, Committee of Adjustment members. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you my minor variance application submitted by Cleon Martin on behalf of Auto Farms Limited, the owners of the subject site. Can I please go to the second slide? Thank you. The property is located on 4485 Road 122, the township of Perth East. The subject site is situated on the west of Line 42 on Road 122. The frontage is on Road 122 with an area of 40 hectares inside. And next slide, please. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to build a new humane swing barn on the site and therefore need to relieve from the MDS 2 setback from the Perth East zoning by law. The deficiency is 100 meters from the required setback to the proposed setback, which accounts for approximately 25% decrease in calculation. So from 405 meters to 305 meters. The auto farm is designated agricultural in the official plan of the Perth County and is zoned agricultural in the zoning by law of the township of Perth East. It is situated within an agricultural community. Now, the province has adopted the land use planning tool called MDS Document by OMAFRA. The latest version of that document was published in 2016, and the publication number is 853. The intent of this document is to prevent land discompletes and minimizes nuisance complaints from order. The provincial direction with regards to MDS 2 compliance is echoed in the Perth County's official plan and the Perth East zoning by law document. Now, the MDS guideline provides criteria to assist decision-makers in evaluating the minor variance application. And the relief from variances are considered when there is an environmental impact or health or public health and safety concerns or natural or human-made hazards on the subject land in a location that meets the MDS 2 requirements of 405 meters. Slide number four, please. Now, the first, there are four tests of the minor variance application set by the Planning Act. The first one is that the minor variance application should meet, should be in conformity with the official plan. Now, the OP requires MDS to setback for new or expanded lifestyle operation. And the OP policies allow for variances when they are minor in nature. Now, the discussion on whether this variance is minor would be dependent on factors such as any environmental concerns on the site or a health and safety danger of the public if the barn would be located where the MDS 2 was required. In this case, the extension of the laneway would accommodate the MDS 2 requirement without causing any concerns related to the environmental impact or health and safety of the public. As a result, the planning department does not believe the proposed variance of 25% reduction in MDS can be considered minor in nature and therefore does not conform to the policies of the OP. Now, the second test is whether it conforms with the zoning by law. Now, the land for the barn is proposed, is zoned agriculture in the Perth East zoning by law, and the lifestyle barn is permitted using the agricultural zone. Section 641 requires the lifestyle facilities comply with the MDS Minimum Design Separation Formula 2. Now, referring back to that MDS guideline, under guideline number 43, MDS 2 setback should not be reduced except in limited site-specific circumstances that meet the intent of the document. The circumstances include the mitigation of environmental or public health and safety impacts or the avoidance of natural or human-made hazard. The proposed variance to MDS 2, in this case, does not concern mitigation of environmental or public health and safety impacts, nor the avoidance of natural or human-made hazards. The proposed variance does not maintain the general intent and purpose of the Perth East zoning by law. Third is, is it considered minor? Now, the required MDS 2 setback is 405 meters, whereas 305 meters is proposed. The determination of whether it is minor is not just a numerical consideration, as mentioned, but rather reflects the impact of the proposed change. The proposed setback to the residence is 100 meters, which represents a 25% reduction in the total setback required. The applicant is proposing a row of trees to be planted along the westwardly edges of the new barn. However, there is no sufficient justification provided as how that would mitigate land discompletes in the long run. The planning department is not satisfied that the reduced MDS setback to the residence at Lot 6, Constitution 6, is minor. The fourth test is, is it considered appropriate planning for the subject site? Now, to address appropriateness, I'd like to refer again to the MDS guideline provided by OMAFRA. The guideline frames the question as, is the reduction for MDS absolutely necessary on this site? And the answer is that it is not. The farm is 40 hectares in size, and there is no environmental concerns that would prevent the owners from needing a setback. Now, based on the analysis, the test for the minor variance application set by the Planning Act is not met. Slide five, please. Now, with regards to the public comments, since the notice was sent out to the neighboring residences, the department obviously three comments from the members of the public. One is a supporting letter from the owner of the residence impacted by the reduced MDS 2 setback on 4504 Road 122. And I received two objection letters, one from residents at 4132 Line 38, who was concerned about the proposal and its impact on the water quality and flooding on their subject property, on their property. And the other letter, I mean, an email I received from the staff. And the other, um, letter, uh, I mean, an email I received from the staff of, uh, from Bill Van Strassen. I do not know the location of the property, but I believe, um, uh, they are present, um, at the hearing. Um, with this, I would like to conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, you or the members of the public chat. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pooni. Uh, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Speaking against? Okay, could you please stand, come to the desk and give us your name and your address?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the presentation. Uh, I'm Teresa Van Stratten. I live, I'm Bill's daughter. I live at four, one, two, four, line thirty-nine, which is concession five, lot four, east part, and I'd like to oppose.
Hey, is that all you wanted me to say? Why are you opposed?
Um, mostly the, uh, health concerns and the air quality concerns.
Okay.
Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to know if you pass this.
Can you say your name?
I'm Bill Van Stratten. I live. We own the property next to it. I own land to the west. If Mr. Otto has the right to do that, does everybody else in the township have the right to do the mark, the variance, and change the distance from the barns? Because then I can do it too. If he has the right to build a barn, there can I build a barn next to him and meet all your criteria? Because I have her place, I have the next place, I have three farms going to the west. I have lots of land back there. And where she lives, I was told, we tear the barn down, we can't build nothing in that area. Now, the, they can build behind us within three, uh, within three hundred meters. Is that okay? Then I can do things on other farms too, if they're, if you allow this to do. Do you, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes, I understand.
Because I wouldn't mind expanding some of the other farms too, but I'm told I can't because of the variance of my neighbors. And why aren't all the neighbors notified?
They are within so many feet.
Yeah, but there's a lot of houses there weren't notified either.
So can you help me out how far?
Well, you got the neighbor here, Kevin Otto, he wasn't notified, uh, Kevin. Not Otto Lavery. Kevin Lavery, he wasn't notified. I don't know Brad's neighbor where.
So the distance is sixty meters from the minor variance that the neighbors are notified. So anyone beyond that would not be notified.
So that rule goes for everything? So if I want to do something on another farm, I don't have to notify the other neighbors either?
Then, then what you're doing.
Okay, I'll, I'll keep that in mind when I come back to the council with other things.
Okay.
I'll say Rhonda's in. I don't have to notify them.
They'll give you the distance depending what you're doing at that.
Well, it took me five years to build a dairy barn with a lot of hassle.
Yeah. Wes?
Um, yes, I can speak, and maybe Poonay could help me through you, Mayor Egits. Um, there is still a process for an appeal, uh, with the Ontario Land Tribunal. I believe it would still apply to this situation. Um, but I think this is the first start of the, the process, so to speak. But, uh, you can certainly, uh, contact the planning department to see what that looks like, sir. Um, but my understanding is that.
Well, I've gone through those, uh, those stages with the dairy barn. I know all the procedures. Trust me.
Okay. Yep, so like, uh, we'd be happy to look at, uh, that application if, if that's, uh, what you would like to do.
No, but I'd just like to know if, if Kevin builds a barn here, that's fine. But then I should be able to do the same thing.
Right.
Or anybody else in the township should do it the same way.
I understand your concern, sir, and I respect that, so.
Because he's got lots of land in other places too, he can put barns.
Okay, I think we're going to move on. Thank you.
That's my opinion.
Who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, is there anyone?
Yes, Kevin, please.
Okay.
Hi, Kevin Lavery, um, reside at four, one, three, two, line thirty-nine. I just wanted to bring up, as my neighbor Bill has brought to my attention, I would, my wife and I would not have known anything about this other than being neighbors. Um, the map that was sent out with the proposal, it has a lot of properties on it. And that is, that is my disgust by this township, that everybody is not aware of what is going on in the neighborhood. Um, I have no problem with barns being built if they're in the proper space. In our area, there is a severe problem with top water runoff that, um, needs to be addressed. And for whatever reason, this auto farm, which was a land farm, wasn't assessed in the drainage when there was a municipal put in there. And it's, we get flooded out, we emailed pictures of our property, um, with severe flooding, washing out our driveway, um, you can't do anything on our property, time after time after time. And where Kevin is proposing this, um, to me, it would be actually better if it was at the north end of his farm where he would like it versus where he can build it, which all of a sudden brings in all the people on line thirty-nine that would be south of him, that would be backing onto his property. That is our concern.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? No? Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? You want to speak in support? No? Okay, we'll move on. Does the applicant or the applicant's agent have any comments with respect to the application? And we do have Steve Jefferson with us tonight, and we also have Cleon Martin. Who, one of you gentlemen, which to speak?
Both of us, actually.
Okay, you want to take? Come up to the desk, please, and speak to the bar and.
I'm Cleon Martin. I'm the applicant in this case, um, representing Auto Farms. Um, and, and provided the initial application to, uh, township of Perth East. Um, is it, is it permissible for me to address the concerns that were raised at this time? So, um, one of them is, um, uh, a concern that was brought of, uh, you might have to help me. I didn't take notes and I should have. But, uh, if the barn is, is placed in its proposed site, it actually is a further distance, uh, which addresses the odor impact that was first expressed here this evening. Because, uh, if it was possible, I believe that, um, Pooney's, uh, presentation at the site sketchup, if somebody could bring that up again, please. At the north end of the property there, the, the white, the white block is the proposed barn. Um, the, the affected house is just on the top end of the sketch and is visible if you get up close, but the shaded area kind of obscures it. To, uh, I believe, line twenty-nine is to the, uh, to the south of there. So with the barn position on the north end, it actually gives more, uh, odor buffer, addressing the first concern. The second concern that was raised tonight um, of water quality and of flooding issues and so on. Um, I'm a certified nutrient management consultant, and I only do these applications to help out fellow farmers. Uh, every application goes to OMAFRA and is, um, goes through a rigorous screening process and, and, uh, requires at least two hundred and forty days of liquid manure storage. And in this case, that is met and exceeded. So, um, as far as the environmental concerns, those have gone to peer review and review and have been approved by OMAFRA already. Uh, next, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Steve, who, um, I retain to address the, uh, areas of, of the four tests for a minor variance and our opinion of those.
Okay, thank you, Cleon. Uh, Mayor Egits, members of the committee. Yes, my name is Steve Jefferson. I'm a planner with K Smart Associates Limited in Kitchener. And, um, yes, Cleon asked our firm to look at this proposal and see if we would be in a position to provide our own opinion letter with respect to the four tests of the minor variance. So, um, I have, uh, visited the, the property. I've reviewed the materials that Cleon has prepared. I've reviewed the staff report from the county staff and, uh, the comments that were in the, the package. Um, I did provide a, a written submission, um, admittedly at last minute this morning to the township. So, um, if it's not in your package, um, I'll, I'll give a quick overview of it here. But, um, I did go through the four tests and, um, respectfully to Poonay, I, my reading of the provincial documents and the assessment of whether, um, you look at the other environmental factors or hazard factors on the site is something that you do only after, um, if you decide that the application is not minor. Uh, when I looked at this and my experience in the farm community and the operation of facilities like this, uh, in my opinion, the proposed location, uh, can be considered a minor variance. Um, in the documents and as Poonay mentioned as well, um, we don't look at percentages and that amount of variance from what the calculation shows. Each one is looked at on its own individual merits. And some of the, um, one of the key phrases in the county official plan is whether the approval of this application would create an unacceptable adverse impact. And in reviewing this proposed location and the fact that the closest residence across the road has issued a submission in support of the application, I think that just reinforces that the family most potentially impacted do support this, and they do not see an unacceptable adverse impact. So therefore, the four tests with, does this maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan? Yes, I believe it does. This is an agricultural area. It's a very typical, uh, proposed building, uh, in this area. Does it maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning by law? Yes, I believe it does. And, um, we're just addressing the MDS requirement through this minor variance. Um, is the proposal minor in nature? As I said, yes, in my opinion, I do believe it is minor in this context for this particular property. If anyone else in the municipality wishes to construct a barn that does not meet these requirements, the process does exist for them to also approach the municipality and apply and make their own case on its own merits. So I ask that you consider this application on its own merits and not necessarily think about potential precedents it could set. Finally, is the proposal desirable for the development and use of the lands? Uh, when we drive around, uh, the countryside, it's quite often you see out in the middle of a field, a lone liquid manure storage tank or a lone barn out in the middle of the field. And you go, well, why did that happen? Well, it's because the farmer was told that's the only place you can build it, and we're not going to give you a variance. So your initial construction costs are greater, building the laneway back to it, extending the services to it. And then those costs become ongoing for the farmer. He's got a laneway that causes ongoing, you know, regular interference with the cropping of the fields. You create additional headlands. So you're constantly turning, always turning. The size of machinery these days, um, you know, you just want to be able to have a nice rectangle and go up and down. But by moving this out to the middle of the field, it would create a long-term, you know, again, going back to the official plan, I believe this would be an unacceptable adverse impact for the farmer to have to have the barn further away from the cluster. Um, traditionally, you want to have, um, your farm set up so that your barn, your shed, your house, everything is in a, in the cluster close together for, um, you know, ease of access, security, um, ease of servicing, that sort of thing. So what the auto family wish to do is locate the barn in a spot that makes sense for this property. And as I concluded, um, I do believe that this is minor in nature, and I request the support of this application from the Committee of Adjustment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Are there any questions from committee members? Andrew?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Egits. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, the one, the one gentleman speaking against, I apologize, I can't remember your name. Wonder if, um, he had spoke about consistency basically in, in how planning, uh, interprets and, and does these minor variances. I'm wondering if, uh, Planner Pun, um, Planner Dirk Chan could maybe speak to that, how they do consistency, um, if, if there is, if there is that factor in.
Thank you. Yes, of course. Um, so, uh, it is correct that minor variance applications, they are looked at on their own merits. They do set precedence, but every application is unique. And when the planning department goes through each application, they look for that, those four tests, um, that are indicated, whether they need those tests or not. Um, and those are, again, the precedence, yes, they, they exist, but the decision is not, um, the analysis is not based on that, uh, precedence only. It's, it's mainly the four tests of the prescribed, uh, as prescribed by the Planning Act. And in this, um, instance, because it's MDS, um, two setback, we have a provincial guideline, um, by the promise of Ontario, um, OMAFRA guideline, which has specific direct, like provides specific directions to the MDS two requirements and when a setback would be appropriate. So that's how it is looked at, um, in this instance.
Okay.
I hope that answers.
Yeah, somewhat. Thank you. I realize it's not always the same situation. Um, and also, um, when looking at the map, I, I like these MDS maps, they make it really clear. So it looks like part of the barn, I think it's page eighty-four, it's part of the barn, looks like it's actually out of the, uh, required setback. So, yeah, okay. Has there been any effort, um, with any of the proponents or any of the landowners in opposed to, to mitigate that? And, and just if you could speak to any, any attempts to mitigate or any, i- if that's even in the planning scope to, uh, to see if we can come to a resolution. I'm sure the, uh, minor variance fee isn't cheap and people coming back all the time is, is maybe not good for business for them. But, uh, if there, if there's anything you can speak to on that, that'd be appreciated.
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, yes, so the application was submitted, and, uh, the planning department always encourages pre-consultation before an application, um, is submitted. And, um, that was, uh, discussed with the applicant, uh, Mr. Cleon Martin. And, um, it seems that in this instance, uh, the applicant, um, uh, wanted to submit the application, and, um, there is a period that the, uh, minor variance application would have to be, um, we have a month, uh, to really, uh, go through the application. And, um, but yes, it, it, that is something that, you know, it is always encouraged, and, uh, the applicant, you know, can discuss it, um, just to, just to, like, we can discuss where the location could be, um, proposed. Yes.
Thank you. So it sounds like this is first revision. This is the first concept. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, so that is the only concept, uh, that I received. And, uh, from what I understand, the, um, owners are, um, not open, uh, at this moment at least, to other, uh, suggestions. But that is something that the planning department, uh, would welcome. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Amanda?
Um, just, just a question to circle back, um, for some of the folks in the audience that were asking about the, um, the notification. So just want to be crystal clear in terms of the guidelines of, um, how neighbors are notified. Is that outlined through the province, that these are provincial guidelines, not the township? Um, is that correct? Could you please verify that for folks in the audience, just for everyone's awareness?
That is correct. Uh, that's directed by the province, and the sixty meters is, um, across the board.
And I just have one other point of, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on it. And I think Counselor McAlpine did, um, through. did um through uh his question that he asked, um so in terms of when the consultation was happened, happened and before the application package came to council, um the applicant was made aware that uh you as the planner were not supportive of of it uh currently. And there was still no movement on um the the location of the barn. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Just want to understand that, you know, trying to support our farmers and do everything that we can to um allow building to happen uh while ensuring that um, you know, keeping the peace within the neighborhood, I think is also important. Um just want to make sure I understand that all of the efforts have been made before it came to council tonight.
Thank you. Uh so the application uh was submitted without any pre-consultation requests from the applicant. And once it was submitted, then yes, it was discussed with the applicant that the planning department has difficulty supporting this application. And um I uh welcomed, you know, uh discussions on where the uh location could be moved to.
Okay, Jerry?
Yeah, thanks, everyone. So Mr. Martin indicated that OMAFRA has reviewed this and had no concerns. That's correct?
Uh so we're talking about two things here. The environmental issues get get uh looked at by OMAFRA regarding the environmental piece of it. The minimum distance separation is what's before you folks here today. And that's uh brought to, brought to the municipalities by OMAFRA. It's called the MDS guideline, um which we've, we've done our best to meet um as close as we can, but uh and and I have other comments to make as well, but we can finish taking questions first. Does that clarify that?
Yes, thanks.
Other questions, Hugh?
Yeah, looking at the map, um and I'm just assuming you would like the barn where it is simply so that you're not wasting land. And that seems to be a big topic now, though, wasting farmland. So I assume having it in the cluster that would save farmland?
Absolutely, it saves farmland, uh along with uh several points that Steve mentioned about uh initial cost, accessibility, uh headlands. Anyone who's in the farming community knows what a headland is, uh increased headlands and so on. Um and then later, I'd like to get the opportunity to talk about mitigating measures that that we've provided. Uh it's in, it's in here, but we haven't discussed it. So it's in the application.
Okay, other questions? I guess I have one. So I know you wanted in the cluster, you need to move the barn to the left. And and we're within the distance from the neighbors. Then you wouldn't need to zone it, is that correct?
Uh I assume you mean right and east.
Well, to move it, that that we don't need a zoning um and why, why is the barn have to be in the exact spot?
Uh as, as was previously stated, it's, it's within the the building cluster and it's a minimal impact on prime ag land. I find it fascinating that we had a presentation about food security just before this. Um farmers, farmers uh need every advantage that they can because the population of the globe continues to increase. And uh and efficiency and productivity are important for farmers for their own financial benefit and to provide enough food for the world. And and this is, I I understand it's a very small scale, but it it does optimize productivity and efficiency on this farm operation. And and to uh to Puny's point, uh sorry, I forget the last name there. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but uh no pre-consultation was done. I have a little golden rule. When I submit applications, I do them all over the province. When I do nutrient management strategies, if the need arises for something like this, I'll I'll submit them in many different municipalities around the province. Uh if I have, if I do not have affected landowner support, I will not provide a submission for or an application for minor variance. In this case, we actually do have affected landowner support, uh robust affected landowner support. And to the farmers who've, who've gone through uh uh difficulty getting the same application for their uh for their uh farming operations, which was expressed tonight, I can, I can sympathize. I've, I've dealt with the same challenges many times in many places in this province. And I, I would take the opportunity to offer my services to help if uh if an application is needed for, for uh another operation. As far as uh mitigating measures, this particular operation, if you read uh the justification, I know it's not a four test justification as is required in the MDS for the, in the MDS. But uh this is a humane swine wean to finish operation. It's actually a lower odor factor than what is calculated in the MDS guideline. Um the MDS guideline is a fixed thing. I know you can't change that. But we do do the mitigating measures as much as we can. Uh this particular operation has straw bedding, which is is unique to swine. Most of them are on liquid. This one is humane and that means they're required to have sixty percent of their housing on uh a solid floor and not a slatted floor. And on that solid piece of the floor is straw bedding. This is the best pork you can buy. These animals are comfortable their entire lives. As well, uh the, the liquid manure pit gets injected with air uh at the completion of this project, which reduces odors uh significantly. The liquid manure is in an aerobic climate constantly and therefore those uh toxic gases and higher methane and higher odor pieces of liquid manure are not even present. Uh another, another advantage that this property has is that the prevailing winds actually blow away from affected landowners. And I would state again that if we can position the barn in the proposed area, there's only one affected landowner who is in support and the others who have expressed concern here actually have an advantage. They have a greater uh distance buffer between their homes and the proposed barn. But if you would see fit to uh vote in favor of this proposal.
Any more questions from committee members? If not, the committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. So we do have a motion. I'll read it and see where it goes. Says that the Township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment received a report dated March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, prepared by the planners entitled Minor Variance Application D thirteen dash A zero one dash twenty twenty-three dash PE, submitted by Cleon Martin on behalf of Otto Farms Limited. Affecting lands described as concession five north, part lot five, part lot four, forty-four eighty-five, road one twenty-two, Ellis Ward, Township of Perth East for information, and that the committee deny minor variance application D thirteen dash A zero one dash twenty twenty-three dash PE. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Do we have a mover and a seconder?
I'll move the recommendation.
Moved by Bob. Do we have a seconder? Second by Amanda. Any more comments or questions, Bob?
Sure. Uh I appreciate the sales pitch. Uh as a farmer myself, who has a half mile long lane uh to access the building, so I think it's the greatest thing I have. Because I don't have to compact the land like you will when you're hauling out corn, hauling manure, right? Sure, it's incon- inconvenience, but these MDS uh rules are put in place by the province for various reasons. And I do think the twenty-five percent is a little more than acceptable, especially when you can build this barn in another location and you wouldn't even have to be here. Um you mentioned the affected landowner support. That's only good for as long as that landowner has that farm. Once it changes hands, and it will, um there's no guarantee that that person will support this twenty-five percent reduction. Um I'm all for uh saving farmland. I don't see why you couldn't turn it the other way and it would be just as simple to uh work your fields. That little parcel there, it's going to be a huge inconvenience with the type of equipment we're running today. Um I guess I could go on, but uh, you know, as a farmer myself, I realize what you're up against. It is unfortunate that you just couldn't do this without having to come here and try and make it seem like it's someone else's problem and not yours. So I can't support it. If you want to switch it a different way or perhaps even have a ten percent uh MDS reduction, then that might be fine. But I'm happy with the planning report as it is.
Amanda, do you wish to comment?
Yeah, I just want to comment. Um I think just for the consultants joining us, so we have a very pro farmer council that I'm really proud of. Um I grew up on a beef farm in Ellis Ward. This uh uh where this proposal is um suggested. And then we have a pig farmer. We have our mayor, who's a dairy farmer. We have a retired dairy farmer. And so we do everything that we can to support applications that come to us. Um and so I think I struggle with this because I hate saying no to farmers and want to do everything that we can to help them. But I think very much siding with with Bob, this turned into a bit more of a sales pitch for me, for my comfort. Um and um, you know, I think there is a way to to make this um go forward without having to be here tonight. So um just being honest with with everyone and really appreciate the neighbors coming out tonight and um, you know, uh voicing their concerns, it's always helpful um for these deliberations tonight.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed, it's carried. Okay, we're going to move on. The next one, uh we have nothing from our planning department, nothing from the C A O. Uh no report from the clerk, from finance. We have the final budget. So Paula, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Raggots. So before council tonight is the proposed twenty twenty-three budget. And it has been reviewed in detail at the January seventeenth and February twenty-eighth Budget Advisory Committee meetings. The proposed twenty twenty-three budget has been approved by the Budget Advisory Committee. And this includes a township levy, including the general and policing levy with an increase of seven hundred and one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars or seven point five six percent. This relates to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars or six point one one percent after growth considerations. The table on page eighty-six depicts the levies change of seven hundred and one dollars and five hundred seven hundred and one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. The left-hand side of the chart is the provincial and external changes and the right-hand side are the municipal changes. So the total township levy proposed in the twenty twenty-three budget totals nine million nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This consists of the general levy in the amount of eight million five hundred and thirty-six dollars, thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and a policing levy of one million four hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. So the chart on page eighty-seven of the agenda shows a high level breakdown of the proposed twenty twenty-three revenues and expenditures in the amount of sixteen million seven hundred and twenty-three thousand and eleven dollars. This does not include the water and wastewater revenue and expenditures, which are showed on the next chart on page eighty-eight. With expenditures totaling one million three hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So below the charts for the water and wastewater revenue and expenditures is a chart that shows various scenarios of the impact of the proposed twenty twenty-three budget on the typical property tax bill in comparison to the twenty twenty-two property tax bills. For the various property types shown in the chart, the, the increases range from eighty-two dollars for a typical farmhouse up to three hundred and twenty-six dollars for an industrial property. So tonight, with council's approval of the proposed twenty twenty-three budget, this would allow staff to move forward in scheduling their operation and capital plans for the twenty twenty-three year for, to set us up for successful completion within the year of twenty twenty-three. So that concludes my report. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, questions of the report? Hugh?
Uh just a quick question. On page ninety-five, the source water protection is going to cost us about twenty grand a year. Is that just to keep our uh compliance up? Because they shouldn't have to be doing a new report because it only is the three wells?
Can C A O give us help with that?
I can try. Um yeah, so the, the source water piece, you're correct, Deputy Mayor, that the initial plan was established uh in consultation with upper tenants. We've tried to keep some dollars in terms of um as there are changes within the areas where the plans exist, there may need to be mitigation measures um and further works as it lights to those plans. Let's say something develops in the area close to one of the existing wells, there may be implications. So we've s- left some money to try to address those things and to update the plan if there are changes as it relates to the well.
Okay, other questions? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Raggots. Um George R. Michaels, uh just a quick question. The chart on eighty-eight, you spoke of were shown with the different tax changes for the year. So that uh will pick the farmhouse eighty-one eighty-three. Is that based, is that, that's the average, right? So there's going to be some higher, some lower? That's township-wide average, just to.
Yes, through you, Mayor Raggots. This is the typical farmhouse assessment that we use from OPTA for all of the various classes. We use the typical assessment for that class.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? If not, we do have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East receives a report titled uh twenty twenty-three, three final budget, F I N, twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, prepared by the treasurer dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three for information. And that bylaw oh nine dash two zero two three being a bylaw to adopt the final estimates of all sums required by the township for the year twenty twenty-three, be given three readings. Moved by Jerry, second by Bob. Comments or questions? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Raggots. So obviously, um this period in in the world, I guess, is a very uncertain. We briefly spoke in the last meeting about having some type of relief for taxpayers. And we've seen tonight that even at the average, that would buy half a basket of food. That money we were proposing to take it out of was the capital fund, which I believe is um is uh money that's extra. Um it's not a, it's not a dedicated reserve. So that's actually the taxpayers' money. We chose not to do that. And that was our, that was a choice and I'll stand by it. Staff's done a great job again, I think. Can't be me, but it seems to be getting easier every year, this is understand. But I'm not going to be supporting it um just because I think we could have done more. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move to public works and we have the annual drinking water system reports. Jake, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Raggots. Um I would like to somewhat preface these reports with saying that I'm not going to get into the the details, so to speak, of each, each one, but I'm going to try and provide more of a high-level overview. Um the first one would be the drinking water reports. Um these reports are actually required to come to council annually um by regulation one seventy. Um so just to kind of run through a couple of the details, um this past year was actually our first year as the operating authority internally. Um we managed to have no non-compliances through the year, so that's certainly a positive. Um we did have, if you look at uh Shakespeare, we did have one um pressure issue, which was very minor in nature. Um, pressure issue, which was very minor in nature, um, and also we had a. A bacteria hit which we fully believe was a sampling issue or um or error. So that was resolved quite quickly, other than that, we had not had any exceedances, uh, Milverton or Shakespeare. Uh, besides the the obvious, which is arsenic, and just to briefly touch on that. Um, we have the regulatory relief until September thirty-first, I believe, of this year. Um, we're ongoing with the E A process, we've received a draft of the study. Uh, just recently, and we anticipate bringing that to council within the next couple of meetings. Um, which you guys will have the opportunity to comment at that point. And furthermore, we've kind of got into a bit more of the costing specifics um in that process. So we'll update you more on that hopefully shortly. Uh, I'm trying to think if there's anything else for water. I think that's it for water, if there's any questions on that, certainly I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, questions, Hugh?
Uh, yeah, on page uh one fifty-two, um, with the wells uh in Milverton. Uh, with the one can, uh, I believe, um, seventy-three point seventy percent capacity. So at what, what point are you considered full? Like, I'm sure you don't want a hundred percent, so, like, how much wiggle movements are in there that you can still. Build or do stuff like, uh, uh, you don't have enough capacity there?
So I think that's something that's on the radar, especially as we see more development coming to town here, it's it's going to be a concern at some point in time. Um, but we also have a reserve in town, which is highly valuable. Um, that there event, um, I can tell you is from a fire incident. So that's certainly a, where the water is coming from there, um, but we are looking. Um, our, one of our wells is not producing as much as the other, we're not allowed to take as much from one as the other. We're investigating, trying to have those matched, so we can get further capacity. Um, and pull more water essentially, so it's something we are looking at, and it will be in the near term, so. We're actually rehabbing well for this year, um, so the next step would be to. See if we can get more capacity out of it, so it's it's near term where we're looking at that.
Okay, and I just wondered if you have to do another well, um, would you have to move. Out of Milverton to do that, like, you wouldn't want to do equipment, uh, everything in the same aquifer, right?
It's possible, um. One of the options, like we have in Shakespeare, we have a situation where we can alternate wells. Um, there's the option to do that in town here, um, we can. Now, even in the past, they've had wells, you know, just a little further out of town, or at the edge of town, um, that don't influence as much. So those are calculations that will have to be, to be ran, but uh in due time, we'll, we'll go through that process.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, other questions? See no questions, we have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receives a report dated March twenty-first. Twenty twenty-three entitled twenty twenty-two annual drinking water systems report. P U B dash two zero two-three dash zero four, prepared by the operations coordinator. And manager of public works and parks for information, moved by Hugh, second by Andrew. Comment your questions, all in favor, carried. Okay, and the next report is our wastewater system, Jake, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Aggits, so this report here covers uh both our two uh wastewater treatment facilities. Um, this, what is actually not required to be uh taken to council, um, more for information purposes. For you guys, um, to keep in in touch with the situation. So, a couple of things to discuss, uh, as it relates to wastewater. Um, there were a couple of minor exceedances, um, and actually at both facilities, but for starters, uh, Milverton. Couple minor exceedances, um, it's very uh impacted by the natural environment, being it's a lagoon system. So there are some considerations there, this year we are looking to uh improve, we're actually hoping to, uh, assuming we got the go-ahead. From the capital budget, which we did, we're looking to replace the diffusers and a couple of other minor upgrades there. Um, as it relates to Shakespeare, we actually did some improvements this year that greatly improved things. If you take a look through the report, there was a point where we, we did those changes, and from there on, we had exceptional results. So certainly, uh, putting taxpayers' money to good use in tho- in those areas. Um, some of the concerns, um, we have with the flows we're receiving. Um, you'll note that, uh, actually for both Shakespeare and Milverton. We, during high precipitation events, um, we get a lot more flow. So that's related to uh infiltration and inflow, um, it's definitely become a concern, it costs money. Some of that has to do with aging infrastructure, where you have leaking pipes taking on groundwater from rain events and so on. Um, the other probably more uh pressing matter would be you have people. Um, illegally hooking up into the system, it's definitely a concern, but one of those things that's very hard to enforce. Um, you can do an I and I study, uh, which is quite comprehensive and. Quite expensive at the same time, it's something that's, that's been on the radar. Um, but that will be a council decision if they wish to pursue that, um. The other thing, we're trying to replace some of the aging infrastructure this year, getting started in Milverton. Um, with some of the road reconstruction projects in the older areas of town. So those are a couple of things we're doing to to help that, but uh certainly more work to be done there. Uh, if there's any questions, yeah, feel free to ask.
Okay, questions of the report, Andrew?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Aggits, uh, thanks for the report, uh, Jake, um, so how often does the the sewers get, uh, cambered? Is that a regular event, or just as needed, if there's a problem?
We, yeah, certainly in an event of an issue, we'll camera them, but we try and do some segments each year. It's, it's not a cheap process to have done, um, but yeah, that's something that. You know, would uh show some of the illegal connections and so on, um. But it, like I say, there's a lot, uh, a lot of linear infrastructure to cover, so a lot of costs associated there.
Thank you.
Hugh?
Uh, just wondered, I noticed in the report that, um, in Shakespeare, once they get. Downwater, they get down to, uh, like, how much do you have to haul and put in the lagoon up there?
So. I don't have a tonnage for it, we used to do a truckload a a month, we've got it down quite a bit, we're actually trying to de-water our sledge. A lot more than previous years, um, so we're now down to like a few loads every. Say, three months, so we've reduced that significantly, but you're still, you're still looking at, I thi- I wanna say a hundred. Cubic meters a year, so it's, there's still a fair bit of sledge that gets transferred.
Okay, yeah, how does that uh affect the lagoon, like, its capacity then, like, is that pushing the lagoon's capacity?
So the lagoon capacity, we've got room there, for sure, um, mind you, that. Obviously causes uh the sledge cleanout to happen more frequently, um, so that we just had done. I think it was last year and the year before, and quite a costly process as well. Um, but that was uh uh put on to neighboring lands, uh, through the correct channels, but uh. Yeah, that's the only thing that really affects there, we do have the capacity to handle it at this point, so not really a concern just yet.
Okay, other questions? See no questions, we have a motion to council the township of Perth East receive the report dated March twenty-one. Twenty twenty-three entitled twenty twenty-two annual wastewater systems report. P U B two zero two-three dash zero five, prepared by the operations coordinator. And the manager of public works and parks for information, need a mover and a seconder, moved by Bob, second by Amanda. All in favor, carried. Okay, thanks Jake, we have nothing from building, we have nothing from recreation community services. And nothing from fires, so we move to correspondence, and we have two items of correspondence, and the first one is from A J Adams. And he's the president, board chair of the Stratford Perth Pride, uh, Association. And they are requesting, um, to us declare June, uh, Pride Month and to raise a pride flag. Anybody have anything they wish to comment on, Jeremy?
Um, is that we, we have our declaration policy in place currently, I think it dates back to amalgamation. Um, where we're not making certain declarations, uh, I think, what's that? Right around amalgamation, um, so I think that is a policy we need to pull eventually and take a look at, probably in short order, but I'm gonna move. For now to receive for information.
Okay, so we have a motion that council the township of Perth East receive the correspondence from A J Adams. President slash board chair of Stratford Perth Pride dated March second, twenty twenty-three. Regarding a request for Perth to declare Pride Month and raise the pride flag during the month of June for information, and that's moved by Jeremy, do we have a seconder? Hugh, all of them favor, carried. And the second piece of correspondence is from Deb Bell from the Shakespeare Community Athletic Association. And this is asking for a road closure for their seventy-sixth annual field day and fish fry, which is gonna be held June the tenth of twenty twenty-three. Amanda?
Sorry, Rhonda, I actually wanted to make a comment before we voted.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Um, just wanted to get clarity on, um, was brought up about looking at the policy. Um, but that was not part of the motion, so just, I had wanted to get clarity on what was in the original. Whether it was just re- received information, or whether that was just commentary, or without, whether that was supposed to be part of the original motion. So anyways, I know it's passed, but I I did wanna la- flag that, so just, just wanted to get clarity.
My, 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 uh, my motion is to receive information, uh, it is subject to all of the relevant policies.
So it's just received for information, yeah. Okay, good, now we're going to move on to the uh field day, and they're asking for temporary road closures, any questions on that? No, we have a motion that council the township of Perth East receive the correspondence from Deb Bell, Shakespeare and Community Athletic Association. Received March fifteen, twenty twenty-three regarding a request for temporary road closure. Seventy-sixth annual field day and fish fry, June ten, twenty twenty-three for information. And that council approved the request from Shakespeare and Community Athletic Association. Regarding the seventy-sixth annual field day and fish fry parade route, starting on Thompson Street, north on Galt Street. East on William Street, or, excuse me, east on William Shakespeare Street, south on Byron Street, west on Andrew Street. North on Treshell Street, west on Fraser Street, south on Galt Street, and return to Shakespeare Optimus Hall. And further that the certificate of insurance provided by the Shakespeare and Community Athletic Association. State that the corporation of the township of Perth East and the county of Perth be added as an additional insured, but only with respects to their interests. In the operation of the named insured, need a mover and a seconder, moved by Hugh, second by Amanda. Comments or questions, all in favor, carried. Okay, we're moving on to council and committee reports, does anyone have any? Amanda?
Uh, just, we had our, uh, Perth East twinning, um, committee meeting, um, and it was held in conjunction with. Uh, or simultaneously, rather, with the Oktoberfest committee, um, and so I will be sending a save the date. Uh, for council and, um, the managers after following the meeting. Um, so our guests from Germany, um, from Nairrestein will be, uh, joining us this fall, which is very exciting. Um, and uh, we are hoping to have a official ceremony at the request of the Nairrestein mayor. Uh, which will take place, uh, it is on Thanksgiving weekend, so it's Saturday, October the seventh, and so. Uh, we're hoping to have the official ceremony, uh, prior to the kickoff of the, um, Oktoberfest, so. Hope that all of you, uh, can join us, it's gonna be really exciting and and more, more to come.
Okay, anyone else have anything they wish to report on, Hugh? If you wish to, go ahead, or you want me to?
That was quite interesting, going to the M P and M P P day, um, I was there, uh, with the the mayor. Uh, seeing that, um, I think for milk eggs and pork or something. Is it Perth Wellington or Perth Townes number one in Ontario, I didn't quite hear what they said, but I know that we're. Either at number one or very, very close, so it's become very, um. Very lucrative, uh, for the county, uh, the amount of farm income that's coming in. Uh, mostly everybody, the thing that they have, uh, uh, concerns about most of were processing labor. Uh, that seems to be the, the big stumbling block for pretty low everything. Uh, you need that downstream stuff to get your stuff processed and consolidated, so, other than that, I just, uh, found it quite interesting.
Okay, anyone else with reports? Nope, then we need a motion to accept the verbal reports from Amanda and from Hugh, moved by Jeremy, second by Bob, all in favor. Carried, okay, uh, before we go on, I should have said it when we did the budget, but I just wanna say thank you to Paula. And all of her staff, and, uh, you did a great job with the budget. The the expenses are, uh, there, and we can't do anything about them, and thank you to Jerry for chairing it as well. So, uh, I know Paula's gonna sleep a whole lot better tonight. So, okay, now we'll move on to, uh, bylaws, and we have two bylaws that need to be read a first, second, and third time, and they're bylaw. Oh nine dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to adopt the final estimates of all sums required by the municipality for the year. Twenty twenty-three, and a bylaw ten dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to authorize the signing. Of a letter of agreement between His Majesty the King and right of the province of Ontario. Represented by the Ministry of Transportation related to gas tax funds, and that the bylaws listed above be read a first, second, third, and final time. Moved by Jeremy, second by Hugh, all in favor, carried. Okay, we do not need a closed session, uh, do we have any notice of motions? New business, we had two delegations tonight, uh, the first delegation was. From, uh, Kristen Crane and Candace Cunningham in regards to, uh. Food insecurity and the real cause of eating and hearing in Perth.
So it's up to council what they wish to do, they were looking for support, that was their one request for the letter that was in the package. But I'll let Rhonda take these motions.
Well, let's deal. Let's deal with the, uh, the two ladies that were on the screen, first of all, so. Okay, so we have a motion, and I'll read that, and then we'll see where that goes, and if you wanna change it, let me know. So the motion is that council the township of Perth East receive the presentation of Kristen Crane, Director of Social Research and Planning. United Way Perth Hearing and Candace Cunningham, Registered Dietitian, here in Perth Public Health. Food insecurity and the real cause of eating and Perth and hearing for information. Are you moving that, Hugh? Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda, is there any more comments or questions? Jeremy? This is just to receive for information, and these were the two ladies that were on the, came in by Zoom. Okay, all in favor, carried. Okay, then the.
So council, does anyone wanna do anything with the letter? For the first delegation?
They had a letter of support, yeah.
Yeah, there's just a little confusion, I think, so I just wanna make sure, if anyone's wants to support the letter, we can. Yes, that one moved and was carried for to receive for information, but there still is the request for support of the letter.
They had a letter that to Minister, uh, Prime Minister Trudeau and Deputy Prime Minister Freeland, Minister of Finance.
Just, just a question of clarification, we often get delegations where they make, they do the presentation, they make requests. And council often just receive, like, if we choose to do nothing, we don't wanna take. And council often just receive, like if we choose to do nothing, we don't want to take action, we just receive for information. It's usually not treated as two separate things. I just, it's not usually treated as two separate items. So I'm just trying to get clarity. Right, so I think, I think we voted on that, right? So I don't think we need to do anything with the letter.
Okay, but just receive it. Andrew?
No, I, I've been reading the letter multiple times, I'm in, on board with most of it. I think they're universal basic income. I'd need a big report on what that would do to businesses, so I can't, I can't move that ahead to the, the feds as much as I'd like to, but.
Okay, so we just received for information and then our second delegation was from Deborah Swan, the executive director of the local community food. Center, More Than Good Food, and she did have an ask. And the ask was that we either waive the rental fee or we lower the rental fee for them to have a use of our. Hugh?
Becky, what did you charge, what would you charge them for their fee there?
So the rental of the one-third hall is what they'd be looking at for, during the week would be a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. And that's inclusive of tax. And that gives them all day. Essentially, they need four, four to five hours. Per rental.
Jeremy?
I appreciate what they're doing and, and I'm thankful for what they're doing. Food security is a big issue, I think. We do have a system in Milverton that, that helps those in need of food at the food bank. It's, as far as I know, quite well-used. We also have grocery store in town and, and other places that are selling food. That are not subsidized by the township in such a way. So given the fact that we have, we do have, you know, some assistance with food security here. I think that we need to charge the rental fee.
Okay, Amanda?
Yeah, I'm of sort of the same feeling. I, I think I would love to see a collaboration of working with the food bank here. In town that currently doesn't offer, you know, like meat and, and dairy and fruits and vegetables. So, and just, I think it, it really, my, my concern really is that. So they have this grant, which is great, and it's enough to run for one year. We tie this in and if, you know, it comes back in a year and they say, this is so great and everyone loves it. But we need money for the township to keep it going. And so that's my concern, because once you start offering services and take it away. People get really upset and I feel like it's too closely associated with the township if we waive the fee in its entirety. And it also could potentially impact other folks that want to rent the space. Although I think there's ways to, to work around it. So anyways, that's just sort of my, my feeling. I really support what they're trying to do and have been involved in the local food community center in the past. But I just really am a little worried about optics as well and setting a precedent, because there's a lot of good causes that. The township could support and so we just have to be a little, little careful.
Okay, anyone else? So who wants to move what? That we receive it for information? Andrew and? Jeremy, do we need to state in the motion that you do not, that the fees, the regular fees will be charged? No, just receive it for information? Okay. Seconder, Jeremy? So I'll read it, that the council of the township of Perth East receive the presentation from Deborah Swan, Executive Director. The local community food center, More Than Good Food for Information, moved by Andrew and second by Jeremy. Any more comments or questions? All in favor, carried. Okay, any announcements? Then we have the confirmatory bylaw, that the bylaw number eleven dash twenty twenty-three, being a bylaw to confirm. The proceedings of council of the township of Perth East at its regular meeting held March twenty-one twenty twenty-three be read a first, second and third time. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh, all in favor, carried. And the last motion of the night is that we adjourn at eight fifty-five. Moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor, carried. Thanks everyone. Good night, great night. Enjoy the rest.